The only thing I did.
Yeah, that's right. I forgot.
I don't know where you put it.
I'll just put it right at the beginning.
Yeah. Rich, Rich did that right away, so.
Yep, so we'll just.
Okay, so I, I believe that we approach the minutes and to mend it.
My second.
All in favor?
Well, I abstained.
Yeah, well.
Am I a member today, or am I still an alternate? Should I be voting or not?
Somebody is for Rich. Somebody needs to be.
Yep.
For Rich. For Rich.
Yeah, well, I think Rich did it last time. Yeah, you're, we'll appoint you as.
I, I did it the last time because Rich wasn't here.
Oh.
But I, I don't.
So it's your turn.
Okay, I'm fine.
It's in the minutes that it's he be.
All right.
For this time?
For this time.
Okay. I'm a fickle.
Okay, so I guess next is, um, thinking about scheduling. Reports and I, I understand the next, next week, a week from today, is the Regional Planning Commission.
Yes, the RPC will be here on the 10th. And then, so we're just looking at doing the 24th and then the 14th.
Right, and the 24th, I think, Nat, you talked to Sandwich.
Yeah, yeah, the, uh, the gal at Sandwich is, um, Karen McLeod, I believe her name is. Susan McLeod. And she's the land use secretary. She said no planning board members volunteered. I have done two presentations to OPD conference session and one for the Housing Academy. So I have short PowerPoint and brief talking points. I wrote the hot grant application, was administrator during the monthly reports, attended all public outreach events and hearings, and did final close report. So I am very familiar with the process and how it went at Sandwich, and I would be happy to come on October 24th.
Fabulous.
So by Zoom?
She's coming or is she gonna come by Zoom?
No, we need to send her an invitation, which is what I said. I said, excellent. You sound like the right person. Um, to give us the whole journey. We'll pencil you in for the 24th and we'll send a meeting invitation, probably Zoom. The meeting will begin at 7:00 PM, October 24th. If you have any questions, please let me know. So can we send her a Zoom invitation?
I will create a Zoom meeting for that night and if you send me the contact information.
Yep.
Do we need, do we need to vote to invite her? I mean.
No.
No? Okay.
I think I forwarded this whole thing to you.
That's fine then. Yep, then I will.
You and Tim and, uh, and Rich Maggie.
Perfect. I will get hold of her and I will set up the Zoom meeting. Vicky, will you be there?
I'm planning on.
Okay, because I will not.
Just, uh, what I need to do is do, maybe on the 10th, you can just go over the fine points because I haven't been doing things with Zoom for, like, since, for a long time.
You have an Apple machine, right? Okay, I gotta talk to Jordan, um, because I don't do Apple, so I have no idea how to connect to the TV. Well, the Zoom stuff, not a problem, but what I'll do is I'll set up the Zoom meeting. I will send you.
Okay, well, just can we do it, um, maybe, so on the 10th, the RPC is gonna be here. Can I come by during the day or?
Sure, absolutely.
On that day?
I'll be here, um, after 1:00.
Okay, and will Jordan be here so that we can do, talk Apple?
Yep.
Okay, so.
And the, the big thing is, uh, trying to get it on the TV so any public that's here. And I just, I don't know how to connect to the, the TV. The Apple stuff for the Zoom is usually pretty simple.
So can you use Apple Play or?
I don't know.
Right.
I mean, you can use Apple Play on non-Apple.
Almo- almost certainly, but that's why those folks are gonna figure it out.
Yeah, I, like I said, I, I don't do Apple. I have no Apple devices whatsoever, so I can't.
He's allergic to Apple.
Well, no, I, I, Apple is a, it's a fine product. It does what it's supposed to do.
Seems to work, right.
It works very well. They're very expensive.
Closed in this window instead, this corner instead of this corner. Okay, so I'll plan on coming like around 1:30.
Sure.
And, um, just do that and bring my computer.
I can, I'll create just a, a fake meeting and.
Okay, and you're gonna Zoom in on the 24th?
No, I will not be. The 24th, I have to be, um, at the hospital at 6:00 in the morning with a friend of mine who's getting a hip replaced, and I have to be there all day long until I bring him home, so I'm not gonna be in any condition to come to a meeting.
Yeah.
That's amazing. You, you may be bored, but.
I'll be bored. I'll be exceedingly bored.
Right. That's amazing. You can get your hip replaced and they say, go home, get out of here.
That's what they did with my knee.
Knees, knees are different. I mean.
Knees are knees?
Actually, knees are, you're right. Knees are harder.
That's what the insurance companies say.
Well. And you can get sick in a hospital. I mean.
That's right.
That's what I know.
And you can't sleep because it beeps all night.
Anyway. Okay, so, so then the next date is the, is November?
24th.
Twenty.
Well, October 24th. Right, that's the, well, that's the date we just.
That's what we're talking, that's when Sandwich is coming. So it'd be November 14th? And that's our only meeting in November because of Thanksgiving.
Right.
So what are we doing then?
Uh, we should decide. That's one of the things we need to decide.
Right.
The options are Jonah, what?
Okay, oh, see, just, we're just doing one. So, um, the Lime Foundation is meeting with Twin Pines, talking about a housing initiative that they would like to get involved in. And, um, that, that happened. So I wondered if that could be combined or something like that.
It'd be very interesting to hear that conversation.
What's, uh, what's going on?
Well, I think they're thinking, um, well, it's not they, but we have a board member that's really interested in, looking for like a vacant property, um, not, you know, like a house that's uninhabited right now and buying it, fixing it up, and then, you know, through Twin Pines making it available for affordable level to somebody. And, um, whether or not there'd be specific fundraising around that or, you know, the Lime Foundation would just empty the bank account or, you know, that hasn't been, but this is all very preliminary or just to, you know, using existing, you know, something that's existing but not current.
So they don't have a house in mind or anything?
Uh, probably the person who's spearheading it might, but I don't know. So it'd be like accommodating one family probably, you know, but every additional unit or, you know, incrementally is how it's gonna happen, but I think that, and they don't even know. I mean, they're, they're just, we don't, they haven't talked with Twin Pines, but this is like kind of their, they're going at it in that way.
So this is like creating a rental unit?
Be creating a unit that Twin Pines could put, it could be a ownership unit or it could be rental, don't know, but that, you know, probably Twin Pines would have the option to get it back and then there'd be, uh, a ceiling on appreciation so that it could stay at affordable level. I'm not, but all this is way in advance.
So it might not be unlike Habitat for Humanity, except they wouldn't build the house, they would just already have the house.
Already have the house.
Because that's what Habitat for Humanity does.
Yep, they built the house.
So it'd be a similar type thing, yeah.
They'd be buying an old house, like, uh, you know, that's not being used now and fixing it up and, you know, so no new structures, but, yeah.
Yeah.
If, if they wouldn't mind an audience, I would be very interested in hearing that conversation.
Right. Well, I wondered if it couldn't be combined because it's always, there are different ways to skin the cat. And then the question is, is Twin Pines interested in working with, with Lime at all? And it seems like it shouldn't be the planning board, but there should be a different group that's more housing-focused group that would then be working with Twin Pines on push, getting, moving ahead with something.
Right.
So is the Lime Foundation that group?
No, no.
Is there, is, is there a housing group?
No.
No, 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 um, the Lime Foundation does not, I mean, the Lime Foundation can provide funding for a project such as that, that, you know.
The Lime Foundation bought Dorcas Chapey's house, didn't they? They held it for a year to see if they wanted to make it into town offices. And then they sold it privately.
Is that the one?
Right on the corner opposite the school.
The library?
Big, big white house.
Along the solar panels.
Big, big white house.
Yeah, I hope.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So I mean, that wouldn't, it sounds like it might be a reasonable thing to have it combined, do it combined.
Right.
So.
Right.
So I, I wanted to throw a couple other things in there.
So that, that date could possibly be the, um, November 14th.
So we don't.
The way that, that this group is working.
Right.
Because I, I don't know if there's a specific property in mind that this board member has or, or, or just what, but it just seemed like if we were gonna have somebody from Twin Pines come, it would be kind of stupid to ask them to come to two different organizations in Lime. And, you know, to, at least to look like we're all moving, you know, we're connected or, you know, doing things in a coordinated fashion.
Well, maybe we should ask them to come on the 14th and then hopefully the Lime Foundation could come also.
Yeah.
I mean, we'll, we'll have it for us if they want to come.
Well, let me see if that will work out, um, and, uh, so for November 14th. And, and our focus would be more generally, what are we gonna talk to Twin Pines about?
I don't know, just what they do, how, I guess how it works. I mean, do they always need free land? How do they, how do they get grants? I mean, they must get a lot of money.
Yeah, they've brought, they ran a lot, a lot, I mean, if you get on their website, a lot of these is talked about, but yes, they get a lot of separate.
Well, it would be interesting because they, uh, they, they looked at, um.
Earl's.
Earl's place. And so they have some familiarity with what our zoning regs are, and they could tell us more about what the specific stumbling blocks are.
Yeah, I was talking to Ray Clark a little bit about Green Mountain Studios. Ray's comment was, he said, I don't think the septic there is very good. I don't know, not sure how he knows that, but, you know, he was saying that the septic might be a problem there.
Well, the septic, a septic is sized, um, differently. You know, it's certain number of gallons per day based on bedrooms. But if you have a business, it's a smaller number depending upon number of employees. It's like, it, it, so if it's sized as a business.
I mean, as it is now.
If the leach, if the leach field is sized for a business, then it would be hard to put multiple housing units in there without.
Redoing.
Redoing the leach field.
You would have to redo the leach field because it would not be sufficient.
Exactly.
Yeah, you'd have to, but I think Ray meant that the soil, you know, I think he meant it would be difficult.
You can always cope with that.
Yeah, well, I mean, he was saying that, whatever.
Now, I'm not sure the, the, um, the water table is pretty high.
Well, that's why we, we bought $20,000 worth of Vermont's finest to build the mound system where Lime Electric is.
So I, I wanted to throw in, we mentioned Jonah Richard. I did talk to Andrew Winter, who was very interested in coming.
Who's he?
What's that?
Who's that?
Andrew Winter from, from Twin Pines.
Oh, okay.
And he said yes. Regrettably, uh, Rich Maggie sent me a note that said yes. Our dates are like, whatever it is in October, it's November 7th. Andrew said, yes, I can come on the 7th, and then regrettably, Rich wrote me and said, oh, but we're actually meeting on the 14th. So I don't, I don't know. Did Rich talk about, Rich Maggie talk about that, um, last time?
I wasn't there last time.
Yeah, right, he didn't. Okay, so we, we, we may need to work out with, with Andrew. I mean, I, I still think it's interesting.
Well, just see if he can come on the 14th, right?
Well, I mean, I think that's right. Um, a couple other things. Do we wanna talk to Jonah Richard? We've mentioned his name a bunch of times. And the other thing that, uh, at Upper Valley Thrives, I ran into a woman named Jamie Rogers from Margaret Pratt, continuing care up in Bradford.
Is that the one up in the hill?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. And she had an interesting diagram of the units that she's got. And, and so I thought, I thought it would be interesting to say, to invite her to come and tell us about some of the design principles that they used for senior housing. That would be a useful thing for us to know if we wanted to have senior housing on.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I don't think we want a huge.
Well, we don't really want senior, I mean, it's like, we can't.
That's right, we, we can't have a zoning amendment for senior housing, so.
Yeah, to keep that, it has to be the same for every, you know, any kind of person, not just senior housing.
Is that because the state's, um, insistence?
Okay.
Right.
So.
If you give special dispensation for senior housing, you have to allow it in every district.
Right, yeah, that's why we put a sunset clause in.
Poison pill.
Okay, so the 14th, I know that, um, the board member at Lime Foundation was working with, um, another person, not Andrew. But Andrew being the executive director would be the bigger, I mean, possibly the better person to have. So are you, is Rich in touch or?
So I, I just CC Rich on Andrew's, um, message. And, and I, I figured maybe Rich could work it out, but.
Well, the other thing is why couldn't we meet on the 7th? I mean, we're meeting off.
Instead of.
Instead of 14th.
Yeah, like we did, like we're doing tonight.
Yeah, exactly. So if that would work better for Twin Pines, why didn't we do that?
Well, yeah, maybe Richard asks whether he can come on the 14th, and if he absolutely can't, then we'll just, you know, the 7th.
10th, you, you know, next week, you can make that decision. Right, we'll be here, won't we? We'll be here.
A week from tonight.
Or we could make it on.
And the 24th.
But, yeah. All right.
So, so are, we're suggesting that I should talk to Andrew and see if he can come? You're, you know, you've been talking with him and.
Just, you know, keep, keep Rich Maggie and Luke, you know, CC them and all the correspondence, so what he knows.
Next week is, that's with the regional planning.
And did we, did we get this guy from Farley?
Jonah? Well, we haven't scheduled him yet.
Oh, does he have a day which he can come or?
Well, he, he sounded pretty open, because when I talked to him, I was saying, well, we don't know what day it's gonna be, but it could be into November, or even December. You know, I, he's around, so I think it's, he's pretty flexible, I think. Once we happen to catch one wrong day, but maybe, maybe December, maybe, maybe December.
Looking at, well, second.
Right after Thanksgiving.
Sure.
We're gonna lose our audience if we keep having these things trailing on and on and on. That's the problem with having so many. I'm a little concerned that we're not gonna get, you know, people to come out for each of these events, but.
Oh, you might, you might develop interest.
Yeah.
I will say, um, when I mentioned at the UB Thrives meeting, um, when I said the planning board is, um, gonna be holding these sessions, um, there were a bunch of people that were interested. So I think, I think this is a good thing, guys, this is an unmitigated good thing. I'm really happy we're doing this.
Well, it's a good time of year to do it.
Yep.
We should probably send a notice.
Maybe we should have a session on the 7th, November 7th.
Right, we could do the 7th and the 14th. It's just, you get into December, people are like in holiday mode, no one's coming out to anything.
Yeah, well, maybe we need to find out what day the Twin Pines can come.
Well, he was all in on the 7th.
Okay.
So he's totally crying for the 7th.
Well, can we get a quorum? I mean, you're available and everybody here can come on the 7th and the 14th? Okay, if we, if we do both of those.
Are you thinking of Jonah on the 14th?
Yeah.
And I asked this before, do we think that we could have two people come and talk about different things?
I do. I mean, I, I, I think Andrew Winter would probably be, you know, personally and professionally interested in meeting Jonah if he doesn't already know him. Um, and that, you know, that they might be happy to be in the same room with each other, but.
I guess, I don't know, I just, I just keep thinking that, you know, if you have two people, the first person, at some point, you gotta say, well, they're gonna cut them off.
Sure.
And say, you know, whether it's just too.
Tell them you got a half hour. I mean.
Yeah, but I'm talking about, I'm thinking about questions and.
I think you gotta tell them you got an hour.
Really?
Yeah, half hour to talk and then half hour of questions.
Right.
And we go two hours.
Okay. I mean, yes, but that would still get two people in.
What I think you gotta do.
Yep.
But then a lot of people don't wanna stay.
Yeah, I think public, the public sessions, we gotta keep that tight.
Right.
Well, it would be helpful if we could direct questions in advance to the speakers so that they're not like, you know, rambling and, you know, that they're, you know, too point of, you know, like, questions that we have. And we've been very specific with the Regional Planning Commission about what we want from that presentation. And I think we should be, you know, more targeted and that we also use what our questions are to entice the public to come, because it's not just, oh, blah, 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 but, you know, we'd ask this person to come and address this issue or these questions.
Do we have written questions for the?
Regional Planning Commission was asked to say, talk about their methodology for coming up with the housing needs assessment, and then how did they distribute the numbers specifically to Lime?
That's next Thursday.
Yes.
So, um.
And then they've also been asked to say for communities of Lime size with no municipal water or sewer, what are communities doing to try to facilitate, um, the numbers that have been assigned to them to rent housing and housing?
So I'm just thinking that if we, we, we wanna push that out to the, to the town.
Well, didn't Rich Maggie wrote that letter?
Yeah, it went out.
Which I happen to have a copy of right here, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that went out to the list, sir.
Right.
Well, it probably should go out again.
It should surely go out again now. Yeah, I can send that out again on Monday.
Can I be a bit of a pain in the neck and say, can we bulletize it so it's much more concise? This is a, this is a lot of text for somebody to read.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Yeah. But, Vicky, I would think that Twin Pines, they're gonna have a regular program. I mean, they've done this a million times probably, so they, they must have a.
They don't need to go out and sell themselves. They are so busy with towns or, you know, people asking them to do stuff. They don't want to sell themselves.
You know, they must have.
Well, of course they do, but what, what, what do we wanna know? We don't wanna have a blah, blah, blah. That's, that's what, you know, we want them to, you know, and what do we wanna know from them?
Yeah, just how it works, how, what they do.
Well, they do every, I mean, they do all kinds of things, but.
What are, what are, I mean, so, I mean, you're right. I think we should talk about questions. What are, you know, what are the biggest problems you run into?
Well, I think that with some of the questions they're talking about, asking the regional planning people about strategies for towns with no sewer and no water would be fair questions for Twin Pines as well.
Yeah, well, I, they, it's, you know, they basically get invited in and, you know, they don't specifically look for, oh, we need to do a project in Lime, um, you know, because they don't, they're busy enough. And they don't wanna waste their resources prospecting. They wanna have, so I mean, that's why they were interested in Earl's building because here's a, you know, it's not a pie in the sky, you know, here's a specific property, what's the feasibility?
Right.
And, um, so. And I, 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 for me, I, rather than asking them to address the shortcomings in our zoning ordinance, it would be, um, more of, ooh, what's the ideal situation to, for you to come in and work with a community so that we would know how to set up something in order for them to come in?
Yeah, like, do they need free land? I mean, do they ever buy land or does it always have to be donated? That kind of stuff.
Yeah, that's a reasonable question.
Right.
I'm sure they do, because it's not, I mean, in Hanover's case, it, it was donated, but they do, you know, a lot of projects in White River and other parts of Hartford and Lebanon. So, but it'd be good, I think, to get some questions, and you might wanna, if you're communicating with Andrew, just say, is it helpful for you to have some questions and you will.
Right. So I wrote down, um, three things. I think, what strategies, I'm paraphrasing my notes here, what strategies, um, would you look at for towns like Lime that don't have municipal water and sewer? What are the biggest problems you face in getting this going? Uh, what's an ideal situation for, uh, for, is anything else I should, I mean, he'll, he knows how to do these presentations really well anyway, but.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I was trying to say.
No, I mean, but are there, are there other things that we specifically wanna know about?
Well, how, how, how do we get Twin Pines to do a project here in Lime? I mean, let's be really specific.
What would it, right.
Yeah, what, what, what do you need?
What would you need from us? Right.
Sure, that's very straightforward, I like that.
I mean, that, that's my question. It's like, we want to have affordable housing, so how do we get Twin Pines? And we don't have the expertise to actually do that. So therefore, we need them to come here and we also need them to manage it in long term. Because it's not anything anybody here in this community is gonna take care of forever and ever, so.
When you say, um, what do you need from us, I think you mean by the town, not necessarily the, the.
The planning board.
The planning board.
I'm very clear that there's, there is nothing the planning board can do. We can get our pom-poms out and cheerlead, but, um, yeah.
But what, what situation would you need in Lime to be able to have a successful project? Yep.
Yeah, that might be enough. I mean, that's.
Yeah, and you know, if it's on town on land, they can go ahead and, they don't have to go through reviews, town reviews.
Can I ask a stupid question? Because I really have never thought of this before, but we have multi-dwelling conversion allowed, the special site plan review. What about new construction?
Nope.
Not, no, no multi-dwelling, new construction allowed anywhere?
Nope.
Okay.
But remember, multi-dwelling refers to three or more, not just.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking that part of Twin Pines is economy of scale.
Yeah, what about, and what about planned development though? How does that fit in?
We need to have a mix of uses for that.
That it's not allowed in, but you're not allowed in the majority of the districts, or the majority of the land. Rural district doesn't allow for it.
Right, so that would be commercial.
Commercial, line common, line center.
Common, yeah, which makes sense, yeah. Yeah, so you can do six units per building.
I believe, I'd have to relook at the.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so, so I will get back to Andrew and see if he can come on the 7th. So it looks like we're agreeing to the 7th. That's great with me.
And we're not doing any zoning amendments this year, is that correct?
I don't think there's time.
Well, I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, I don't think there is, because, yeah. So, Twin Pines, November's? No.
Yeah, 7th, yeah. Other than your petition amendment. Well, that's right, that's right. There will be a petitioned amendment.
Seriously?
Yeah, really.
It's very.
Yes, um, to allow propane tanks to continue to prohibit fuel, uh, oil tanks in the shoreline.
That's a state thing, that oil tanks.
No, it's, it's actually the Lime ordinance in the shoreline.
It's the state, you can't vary any more oil tanks in the state, I don't think.
Right, but there's nothing wrong with, I, I would actually recommend that you, um, not just specify only oil. You, you could allow propane, but don't just allow or disallow one. I wouldn't wanna get a gasoline tank. Yes, so it is as defined in New Hampshire RSA. I hate those.
Really?
Yep.
Okay.
Because New Hampshire RSA's change. They get deleted, they get, uh. Okay, well. So you end up. So maybe I should come, I will bring the wording by, David, and I will let you gaze at it. I would appreciate that because.
So why are you doing it by petition?
Uh, just because it, I think it's, it needs to be changed. I mean, I think it's.
Well, it needs to be changed because you illegally buried a tank. You don't wanna do that, so it's for you only. You're the only person in town.
It's for anybody that wants to put a tank near, in the shoreline conservation district.
Why would they, why would we want that?
I don't know, I think. I don't know, I think it's.
Well, I think that, I think it's then fair to say that maybe you don't have a unanimous support for that idea on the planning board. Therefore, it is appropriate.
Well, we have to see, I think we have to see as, and before we really know what's going on.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, do you think that's a good policy for the town to have?
What?
To be burying the tanks in the shoreline district?
There's propane, propane only.
Yeah.
Propane dissipates upwards. And there's no state or national standards for not burying propane tanks near water.
Well, except that if it floods.
Oh, flood zone, completely different.
Flood zone's different, yeah.
Of course, the problem is, I think, with the way the weather's going, wetlands could easily be flood, you know, flood areas too. So it's hard to know. Anyway, so. So, Twin Pines on the seventh, then are we talking about Jonah on the fourteenth?
Yep. How about the lady from Sandwich?
We have her on the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Yeah, October twenty-fourth.
That looks like a.
Could we get, so, we're talking about Jonah maybe on the fourteenth?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I will talk to him right off.
Could, uh, could we see if we could line up the woman from the senior housing, just to see what it looks like?
On the fourth, with Jonah, I mean.
Yeah.
Suppose. Yeah. So you, Rich, do you wanna talk to her?
You've already talked to her. Right, I, I spoke, as I say, I spoke to her on comment over the weekend and she was, I said, I can't make any official offers here, but would you be interested? And she said, oh, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I haven't been up there, I haven't driven up there. You see that, I mean, you can see it in the interstate, but I haven't driven up there.
She just, um, she had a picture of, you know, the floor plan of the place and showed how, had the units. There's a memory care section, there's a, the other, the other continuing care section. And it, it was interesting to see some of the considerations that she had.
Yeah, cause they.
What was her name again? Jamie Rogers, J A M I L. I can send you her contact information, Dave.
Yeah.
Okay. So is, 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 are the Sandwich people the only people on the twenty-fourth?
Yes.
And so, that's the one, so we, I really need to make sure it works. Otherwise, our guest isn't.
Gonna be here.
A lot of pressure.
Right, yeah. Yeah. All right, well, it sounds like we have a schedule.
Yep.
Assuming.
That's very encouraging.
I think so. I mean, there was a lot of interest this weekend.
Do you want me to try to bulletize this and send it to you, Dave? Or what do, what does the board think?
But do you have the board, I, you know, I'll send out whatever the board wants.
Yep, yeah, I think it's fine if you want.
It's just a lot of text for, it's hard to drum up interest, so we.
So, yeah, so you're not changing wording, you're just.
I would just choose some, slightly edit some sentences so that they could be turned into like five or six bullet, with the, preserving the, um, intro paragraph. And perhaps, um, you know, not in any change, sense, changing the spirit of what is said, just trying to shorten it up so that.
You know, that sounds fine. I don't know whether it's worth having, when David gets it, sending it to everybody, I don't know that that's worth it.
You could send it to Rich, and he could.
Well, he won't know what's, what we're planning, but.
Well, maybe David could just shoot it out, it's easy.
I, I can just forward it out.
Just forward it out in case anybody has any, you know, it'd probably be fine, but.
Will you do it tomorrow afternoon? And you'd have, you'd have it by, to look at, you know, I'm not sure when, Monday morning are you here?
I'm here Monday morning, so I'd look at it and send it out Monday morning.
And you'd all pledge to give quick turnaround on comments?
Or for a whole piece.
Yeah, if there's no comments.
So it could go out Monday afternoon, I'm just thinking.
If I get no comments back from you.
Right.
I have no problems.
End of business on Monday? Cause that, that gives a few days' notice, but.
Would we talk about some of these other sessions, or is that premature?
Why don't we see how this first one goes?
Well, I think we need to provide, I mean, yeah, I, I agree, but, I mean, we should be provo- Sandwich, I guess, is pretty much, they're gonna just do, we don't have to ask them questions. They're gonna do the presentation about their experience, right?
Yeah.
So we don't really need to do that. And then, uh, for the seventh and the fourteenth, it seems like, well, those, um, I mean, Twin Pine, you know, we should be providing them with, you're gonna provide, we're kind of done with Twin Pines, really, right?
I think, you know, that we're gonna say.
So it's only the fourteenth, right, that we need to discuss what we want the presenters to address.
Yeah, I mean, I think Jonah probably will just talk about what he did in Lime.
Well, what do we wanna hear?
Well, so I think, you know, one of the things that I think is interesting is, um, what is, what are the economics of developing multiple units? Uh, what are the realities of it? I mean, yeah, you gotta buy the land, you gotta build a thing, but then there's, there's a lot more, um, to, to building. And so, you know, I'd certainly wanna have his take on economics.
Yeah, well, yeah, cause where are you so? Yeah, he just bought, you probably know, but when you go across the Fairleigh Orford Bridge, when you get, before the railroad tracks on the left, which you're probably in the Fairleigh, there's buildings there. Off, they're kind of erect. He just bought those and he's gonna tear those down and build new. The people that live there, he's gonna put them somewhere. And if they wanna come back, I guess he'll let them come back.
The one that had the F Biden side of the flag flying?
Yeah, that's the one. There's a Trump, it's not here too, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's, I think the zoning in Fairleigh made him take down the, the flag, vulgar language.
Yeah, probably, okay. Um, yeah, he substituted Trump.
So just fine, but that's just, I, I don't care what candidate, I don't need to be seeing that every day.
I have, I found it electronically, so I'm good. Sorry.
It's okay. It's back on your feet, it's on your feet, actually. We'll try this again, Vicky.
I'll fold it into a paper airplane.
Let that, I'll just reach across this.
Yeah, so what do we wanna ask Jonah again?
I mean, I think speaking, you know, to speak to, um, economics and zoning, what his experience with zoning.
That's why the building's got a flat roof in Fairleigh.
That's right. Well, he had to go three stories and you can't build higher than forty feet, I think, in Fairleigh.
Um, you know, what? So, those are, those are things that I would certainly be curious to hear him speak to.
Yeah, well, knowing Jonah, I think he's just gonna do the whole thing. I mean, he'll, he'll talk about the whole thing. I guess, what barriers did he initially perceive and how did he overcome them?
Mostly financial.
Yeah, cause I read his.
Oh, he had zoning troubles too.
Oh, yeah.
So, yes.
Still a lot of people unhappy.
Yeah.
With him?
With the building here?
Well, it's one of the ugliest buildings in this upper valley.
Yep, and that's one of the things that, you know, there, there are other business owners in town who are saying, you know, if they had tried to build something like that, they would never have gotten approval.
Yeah, what's so interesting is when I owned Fairleigh Feed, I put that shed on the south end. And at the time, the town said, oh, you, I mean, I was gonna do it anyway, but they said, you gotta put clavards on this. It's gotta look like, you know, the building's a stair.
Historic history's also there.
Yeah, is that, so anyway, they, you know, I mean, it was fine, cause I was gonna do it anyway, but they were really strict. And then I, and then Jonah built that thing and I was like, what the hell? Must have been somebody new on the board. Yeah.
Well, it's hard to say. It's uglier than the mini mall next door of it.
Yeah, but you don't have to perpetuate, I guess.
But I'm, I'm just saying, it's like, so everybody's got different tastes.
Yeah, well, it all turns to shit, actually. Yeah. Okay, well, I'll, I'll run that by Jonah.
I mean, I think, you know, what about questions for Jamie Rogers as well? I think economics and barriers are useful, um, useful questions to speak to. I'd like to know a little more about the, the design principle space for people and this and that. What other questions?
Well, the thing is, that's a, that's a, it's a business. Margaret Pratt is a business.
Sure.
And, um, so.
What difference does that make? I mean, I.
Well, I'm just saying that what we're, I mean, the model that we're more talking about, I think, is, um,
Either rent or whatever.
Yeah, like independent people more going into, uh, the housing that, I mean, if we're talking about, we want more institutional kinds of situations. I think that, that, I mean, do we, is that what we're trying to do, is get institutions here?
No, I mean, it seems likely to me that there would be a demand for it. I know lots of people that have moved out of Lime, um, when Lime could no longer provide a housing option for them.
Oh, well, I missed, it's, the, the town doesn't provide housing, provide, you know, but it's not the town's fault.
So it's. My take.
Kendall didn't come, Kendall could have come to Lime, plenty of land, but Kendall chose to go to Hanover because it had water and sewer.
Yeah.
And that I know for sure because they were looking all over the upper valley for where they were gonna locate.
Yeah, they kinda had to go with water and sewer.
Water and that.
But, so Vicky, suppose, suppose water and sewer weren't a problem, they're a huge problem, I.
Well, I mean, it's, that's like.
Could Kendall have come to Lime? If, if somehow mysteriously we had water and sewer.
Yeah, I mean.
Could Kendall have built in Lime?
No.
Hanover did not have a continuing care retirement community clause in their zoning. They changed their zoning to accommodate that use. Lime might have done the same.
Yeah, but, well, and, and.
I think, I think what, talking to this lady, I mean, I think what, what we've kind of identified is that there's a lack of diversity of choices of housing in Lime. And if we understood what the pros and cons of senior housing, in whatever form it takes, as a, as an institution, as a continuity of care, you know, that would only inform us. I mean, it's, I, I don't wanna say no to all, anything before I learned more about it, I guess, is what.
Well, I'm just thinking, if all the available places were built like that, um, very likely we wouldn't be providing housing for, I mean, for people who live in Lime. It'd be retirees, you know, coming, I mean, as, as, you know, it wouldn't be providing for Lime.
Yeah, if there was a senior housing business like that, we'd probably have to go on a commercial district, I would think, so.
But it would also, like I say, you'd be attracting people from all over, not just.
Yeah, right.
I mean, marketing for like Harvest Hill and, you know, what was this?
Yeah, plus they have to meet, or jump through so many hoops, you know, there's so many regulations when you build a building like that, it's like.
Of course, yep.
Well, just knowing enough to say, well, that's a long way in the future would be, but know concretely rather than we think. I mean, you know all this stuff in inside and out, Vicky, but I'm, I'm not informed about what goes on just in your housing or assisted living or retirement communities, what, you know.
Well, I, I'm not claiming to be an expert either.
Well, you've lived it through Hanover.
Well, there's that and my mother. I mean, you know, my mother came from Pennsylvania and took a place in Lebanon. And probably somebody from the upper valley couldn't move in because my mother came and took that place. So, I mean, you know, but that, that's the market, the market is much different than, I mean, I think what we're trying to do is, you know, provide all various forms of housing to keep our community going. And not, I mean, I guess it would be a great tax benefit or something, having, um, a business like that here. But this, we're not schoolchildren associated with people and that kind of housing, but.
Although, say, interestingly enough, I listened to the, the scanner during the day and the number of calls for Bradford to the Margaret Pratt community is probably in the upper tier of.
Well, same with Hanover.
Yeah, well, yes, going to Kendall.
With Kendall and then, and healthcare terrorists, and then we love terrorists. There's a lot.
Yeah, so there is.
How many, how many residents are at the developmental housing?
UDS, I don't know.
There's six units, I think.
Yeah, it is a very small number.
Yeah, you never hear anything about that, to me.
Well, that's why we have zoning.
I know, I was just gonna say that. That's why we have zoning, that's why it passed.
Actually, they, very few calls, I, in the years I've listened, I can probably think of three or four. And it's only, you know, stuff like they had a major water leak in the basin.
Is it a private?
Yes.
It's a private institution?
Yeah, Vicky, who, what was the guy's name?
Bruce Pack.
Bruce Pack.
I could forget him.
Yeah, is he still around?
Uh, I know his son is.
He was a wooden shoe, right?
Yeah, 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 a long time ago, but.
Remember Wooden Shoe?
Yeah, what was it, Rubens?
It was a commune.
Oh.
Where was that? It was down.
I was gonna say Strathford.
It was up, it was up, I thought it was Beaver Meadow Road.
Anyway, it was a commune. Bruce Pack was a major person, then he ended up staying. And who did he work for? He, cause he was the one that was.
He worked for United Development Services.
Yeah, I guess that's right, yeah.
And that's a private institution?
I don't know if it's a nonprofit or if it's a, I don't know, private.
They used to have one of the residents come over and go talk to the schoolchildren.
I know they were getting, um, beach passes this summer to get.
They live here.
Yeah, no, no, I, I'm not, I, I'm thinking it's great to get people out. And there was one gentleman, they were getting out and he liked to go fishing. And so they were taking him out on the pond to go fishing, so I think those, those are all great things.
Yeah, well, that was the whole idea, but I think the idea was to get people more into a community, you know, cause they were institutionalized and they were saying, well, they need to come out of the community. It's just great, yeah, but it's behind an enormous hedge.
Can't see anything over it. It's kind of invisible.
Yeah.
So we've got, I think we've got a schedule laid out. I've got questions for my two people. Yeah.
Are you gonna send them, or is Dave gonna invite them?
Since you already talked to them.
Yeah.
You know, give them my information for contact.
Yes.
And, you know, if they wanna meet via Zoom, then let me know and I will, you know, make sure that they get the link.
So, so we're assuming everybody's coming in person except Sandwich? Is that right?
That'd be nice, but, you know, if we're not, you know, we can, we can do the Zoom. I just need to know so I can send them the link.
Yeah, well, everybody else is pretty close. I think Sandwich's like an hour and a. Yeah, well, everybody else is pretty close, I think Sandwich is like an hour and a half drive, so.
Yeah, you can't get there from here.
Right.
So is that person gonna stay over or are they gonna go back?
Soon.
Oh, okay, right.
That's why you're gonna be doing the.
It's too far, I'm sorry. I don't blame them, it'd be three hours around to drive over.
Yeah, the roads.
We're cool, but we're not that cool.
Yeah. Okay, well.
Same also with agenda.
Well, new business, they're dealing with new business.
No, I have nothing.
Well.
I had a question. The roofing sign that's on Bailey property?
Hey, I gotta take a look at that and.
It's, it's, it's not their business and, yeah.
I didn't know if they, there was.
It's definitely off.
Oh, is it a relation on theirs?
Is it Jared Olson?
No.
I haven't paid attention.
Somebody else.
I haven't even paid attention.
Yeah, that doesn't look right.
What, what's the?
It's a sign advertising roofs and gutters.
And pressure washing.
It's been up on the Bailey property on Route ten and, I mean, it's not a political sign. It's a advertising sign for a different, you know, business that's not located on the premises, so.
And so they're not doing the work right now, this is just a permanent.
No.
It's like a small billboard.
Yes, it's, it's not as big as some of the Trump signs that I've seen, but it, you know.
I will send them a letter asking them to remove it.
That doesn't seem right.
Yep.
So, I mean, there's no trouble if somebody's working on your roof and they stick a sign out?
No.
No, I, I would look at that as just a temporary.
Yeah, right, I mean.
And then they finish and they take it away.
The zoning does not speak about temporary signs, but, you know, like, political signs, I'm also not going to go around.
You can't, that's, that's.
No, yeah.
And plus we have a what, sixteen square foot, the maximum.
Yeah.
No, no sign can be bigger than sixteen square.
Sixteen.
It's like four by four.
Four by four, right, yeah, and the Bailey's actually, it's a little bit bigger, but it's my understanding that it was there before zoning, so. But I, I will ask to have that one removed.
Yeah, that's just, I don't know if it's a relative of theirs or.
Yeah, I have no idea, I haven't been out that way for months, so.
What's happening with that property up your, up your way? Where they tore everything out?
Little magpies?
Still all torn up.
I've gotta go up there sometime.
Well, they, they relocated the driveway, they still got the curb cut.
They relocated the driveway?
Well, they put it down where you approved it, but there's still, I mean, the stone wall's still obliterated, you know, through the construction access.
Yeah, where the logging was, yeah.
Right, well, it's also been construction access during a lot of the site crap.
How far along are they, they have the foundation?
They've got a roof on and some walls, yeah.
Oh, they are that far? Yeah, that was just such an unfortunate, that we tried, I tried, I tried to, I tried everything to figure out another place on the two hundred and twelve acres to build a house, and we couldn't do it.
You know, it just, a lot of the stone wall's gone and, but just.
And there was a granite gate post that was.
Yes, there was, that's not anywhere that, I'm sure that one of the site guys took it.
Yeah.
As well as the, cuz the stone wall rocks aren't there anymore.
Yeah, yeah, the driveway kinda had to go where we approved it because it was really the only spot where the site distance.
Yeah, it seems like we should have some sort of limitation on the width of residential driveway cuz both of those are really, really wide openings.
Is there some requirement to put things back the way they were?
No, not in this town. So, I mean, we had the opportunity to require that, but that didn't happen, so.
Well, maybe they'll do it when things are all done, I can talk, cuz I know someone, I think they might wanna do it, you know, when it's all finished, they might wanna put the wall back.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, the stones, the stones are still there.
No, they're not still there.
Oh, really? I don't know what happens.
Yeah, well, and the gate post.
The big enormous gate post.
Yeah. Well, yeah, it was just an unfortunate site, that's for sure.
Well, they, I mean, you can see it now, they've got, like, tarps on the roof and you can see it from the common. And when the trees, when the trees go up there, it'll be very visible.
Yeah, cuz Ernst took quite a bit of stuff out of it, I guess, quite a bit of trees.
There's a lot of trees that went away.
Yeah.
It's not, I mean, there, there's still some, you know, kinda like a light screening, but they've got a direct view down to the church and over to the lot.
Right, that's probably what they wanted. Yeah, I'm sure Ernst Clean just took as much as he could to get money for it, so.
I'm sure that they were happy to have those trees gone.
Right.
So that's worth a drive to see what happens to the meadows and stone walls.
Yeah, it's the only place to build on two hundred, I think they had two hundred and twelve acres or something. There was no other place they could build on that way.
Have you guys looked at the guardrail out of the skiway?
I actually went to the, I went to the select board meeting of that, not because of that, I went because of the timber tax thing and I got, you know, I just happened to be there and I stayed. It was interesting.
Yes.
But I didn't.
It's enormous.
So, somebody put together a petition to have it taken lockdown?
No, no, they, Sarah Vargo.
Survey to see what you think, yeah.
Yeah, Sarah Vargo was kinda leading it, and I think one of the biggest complaint was that they felt the selectmen had gone ahead and done it without really getting input, enough input from the town. Of course, the selectman got pretty defensive and said, well, we've, it was listed on the town website, it was, we had two meetings, three meetings, whatever, and, you know, people didn't pay attention. Cuz a lot of people, I think, it appeared and they didn't even know that it was gonna go up. And then one of the women, I don't know, made the point that, or several made the point that it's gonna make it worse. The problem's gonna be worse with that guardrail, because people are gonna be parking on the other side of the guardrail now.
Yeah, but Sean has a tow company in mind.
Oh, does he?
And those cars are going to disappear very quickly and they will learn very quickly.
Has he invested?
Yeah.
But those cars will.
I thought the whole thing was about safety and that Sean really wanted it to be reorganized so it was safer.
Right.
I mean, why?
But see, the real problem.
But like, they have to know about that.
Well, the real issue, and I said this at the meeting.
You said this, yes, right.
Sean agreed, I said at the end, I said, you know, the basic problem here is, the whole basic problem, is the parking lot isn't big enough. Now, it may only be three days a year, but it's not big enough, and Sean agreed.
Well, when you sell tickets online and don't regulate them based on your parking.
Right.
You know, it's, it is a Dartmouth skiway problem. That is, that Dartmouth skiway is the problem.
Well, I remember.
Plain and simple, and it's.
Well, I remember when we sat here and we talked about it, I remember, many months ago. And we said, I don't know, maybe you said it, but somebody said, well, if they do a guardrail, it should not be metal, it should be a wooden guardrail, so it looks right, and the town should not pay for it, so guess what?
Well, the town didn't pay for it, the state did, yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It was state money, it was block grant money.
It was block grant money.
Oh, well, they didn't make that, okay, well, that's different, but anyway, it's this ugly guardrail, thirty-one thousand dollars.
Do you think the metal guardrail would look better?
No, it is metal, but we wanted wood, remember what you were saying to me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, like it would be in a park, in a, so.
Was that just, the state only does metal?
Who knows?
I think it was probably also a cost issue.
Why, that deal is cheaper than wood.
Yeah, it's easier to put up.
And, yeah, I mean, when you're all, all said and done.
Yeah, it's easy.
You just sink the posts and bolt it in.
But, but see, I think, I don't know, I'm guessing on all this, but I, the town has no leverage over the college. So if the college says to the selectmen, we're not gonna do that, the selectmen can't do much. You know, the colleges can do what they want, kind of.
Well, we were very nice in letting them do their bar and, you know, how much goes on up there that is not reviewed? Quite a bit. I mean, the town could be more proactive about enforcing and, you know,
Right.
and making it believable that we have rules that are supposed to be followed.
But see, then it may be a political thing to a certain extent too, that, you know, if we, if the town starts doing all of this, the people are gonna go to the, you know, go to the college and say, oh, the Lyme is giving us a hard time and, you know, they're making it difficult for us out there and all this stuff.
The college needs to have a thumb put on it like all the time because they will do whatever they wanna do unless somebody says. I work with the college like a lot.
Right, well, no, I know, that's the whole thing.
The reason for putting the guardrail there is cuz the college, like, we don't care.
Right, won't regulate the parking.
Yeah, it's Lyme's problem, is what you're saying.
Right, exactly, and so Lyme said, okay, it's our problem, we'll deal with it. And so they let the college know in, in no certain, uncertain, know in certain terms that, you know, fine, we're gonna take care of it this way and.
Right, yeah, and, and my, my, I've been to all those select board meetings and I, I, it's my understanding that the college, that, that Lyme said, this is what we're gonna do and the college did not push back real hard.
And they said, fine, but we're not paying for it.
Well, I mean, the, the head of the skiway sat there in that last meeting, didn't say a thing.
Yeah, right.
So.
Oh, was it Mark?
Yeah, he was.
Oh, okay.
Sitting right here in the back row.
Um, yeah, and so, you know, I mean, I guess there's not much they can say, it's like, jeez, I wish you wouldn't do that. Well, we're doing it, okay.
Yeah.
I just don't understand why there's, like, the, there's no access, it's, it's a solid block all the way up to the lodge.
Right, they took away the middle entrance.
So you can't, yeah, so the only way you can get into that second auxiliary parking area is from the main parking area.
Yep.
So, you know, and, I mean, one of the things that, that came out in that same meeting was, is what we're doing this year? If, after a season, after the winter, if it turns out there's something better to do, we can adapt.
Yeah, David Kahn said that, he's a, that revisited, but see, Sean was saying, well, the people at the meeting were giving Sean a hard time about not ticketing enough people and all this, and Sean was saying, well, I'll ask somebody to move their car and all they'll do is go out and drop, and park on Dorchester Road because there's not enough room. Or people don't park efficiently in the parking lot, there's a random wasted spot. And then the other, the other thing, I just remember, the people were saying that the new guardrail has actually eliminated, how many, how many spaces did they say? It's eliminated some of the spaces.
Well, they said a quarter of the parking and, and that's, you know, I have not seen this, Lynn took a picture of it and it's, it's hard to believe that it eliminated a quarter of parking.
Considering that the guardrail is in the town's right of way, it eliminated no parking.
Right.
That's, the, the reality of this, it eliminated zero parking.
Legal parking.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, but they were saying, you know, some of the people.
It actually increased their parking because it's in the right of way, it's not, it is not at the end of the right of way. So there is still right of way beyond that people will be parking in.
Yeah.
So, it, it, it created, or it removed zero parking.
Yeah, well, it'll be interesting what happens as to whether it's, you know, whether it's better or worse.
Well, I'm sure that parking lot is going to be a nightmare because people are gonna park wherever they wanna park because Dartmouth is not going to have parking attendants.
Well, you know, Dartmouth may choose to do that.
And, yeah, they will be the ones that will, you know, when, when people start getting towed, they'll be sent to Dartmouth to complain because you parked illegally in the road and, too bad.
Yeah.
And, you know, they'll say, but I bought a ticket. It's like, well, Dartmouth sold you a ticket without guaranteeing you parking.
True, yeah. Well.
There used to be parking attendants in it.
Yeah, but see, I think too, that, looking at it from the college's standpoint, cuz I know something about the Morton Farm, you know, the horse farm out there. The, the college is saying, how can we operate the skiway and lose the least amount of money?
Right.
So they're not willing to spend any extra because it's just, they're losing it. Cuz the Morton Farm, you know, they can't get rid of that until the last Morton has died. Cuz that was given, that farm was given to, by the Morton family and it had to be an equestrian center until the last Morton died, so the college is stuck with it and they try not to lose, you know, money out there.
How old is the last Morton?
I don't know.
Well, Smith College got rid of their riding program without any concern for the fact that it was entirely endowed by one family, so.
Really? Yeah, well, the Morton spooks specifically in the thing, and anyway, the college would probably love to sell it though.
Oh, they've got plans for sub-liking.
Really? Yeah, you mean when they can, or when?
Yeah, I, I saw plans and there was, you know, they, Morton Farms was still gonna be there, but a lot of the land.
A lot of the pastures and stuff, yeah.
Be home lots.
Yeah, maybe they're allowed to do that, yeah. Well.
What's the scoop on the bridge? Is that the wooden bridge, is that?
October twenty-third it closes.
No, no, the wooden, the covered bridge.
Edgeel Bridge.
Yeah, October twenty-third it closes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about East St. Patrick's.
No, that's November fifteenth.
Oh, okay.
And it opens on November fifteenth?
So, so we think.
So we think.
That's the latest.
And the, and the, the other one closes on October twenty-third.
The twenty-third, yeah. And then the East St. Patrick's Bridge, what date did you say?
November fifteenth.
Well, that's what they say.
That's what they say.
That's the latest, I get there.
That's what the website said.
I, I think I said it to you, actually.
Yeah, you did, you did, and, and you know what? It's interesting cuz I ride my bike down there and just recently is the first time I've seen those people there like past four o'clock. You know, so I think maybe there's, you know, they're thinking maybe we really need to move on this and get it done.
Yeah, well, see, I, I always felt that when they put the completion date, they always make it longer than what they actually think. But I think they got held up with materials, I think they got held up with some steel, getting material, steel made back.
I think they padded the date.
What's that?
I think they padded the date, and I think you'll find it will open earlier.
By, by me?
They're not going to miss a date, so they're going to go with a later date, but they would much rather.
Yeah, it makes people feel better than, like, right now.
People will be, oh, great, they got it open two weeks earlier than saying, oh, they were two days late.
Right.
You know, it, it's.
Well, it'll be soon, no matter what.
Yeah, it'll be, can't be soon enough, I'm getting tired of dealing with Bridge Street.
See what color it is, I think they're painting the same color as the Orford Bailey Bridge. That's what I heard.
Sort of turquoisey green?
Yeah, well, see, that, that supposedly was the original color in nineteen thirty-eight when they built it, Carl Schmidt did all this research. But initially, way back, when they first started talking about doing that bridge, which was in twenty fourteen, I think it was, when they first had the meeting. And then all along for years, they said Lyme would be able to pick the color of the bridge. So, you know, we, people were talking and stuff, and then that last meeting they had over at St. Ford, the woman, I can't remember her name, but at that point, they had changed their mind and they said, no.
We're gonna chosen lime green.
Yeah. Well, it would have been a little problematic for people in Lyme to pick the color.
Yes. It wouldn't get painted until, you know, twenty twenty-eight.
Right, you have twenty people doing it, you have twenty-five different colors.
Well, anything else on the agenda?
Nothing on the agenda.
Mr. Chair, would you entertain a motion to adjourn?
I would. Turn. So, all right. So next, next week, next week, next week.
Next week, Orford will be interesting. Let's see how fast I can get.